I want to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Uh new rule call, Vicki.
Here.
Sherry.
Here.
Ben, here.
And I is too, where's the at?
Standing in the dessert.
Oh, you said diet or bar, diet sorry.
Stay here.
Here, here.
Miss all the wine and dessert.
Mike, you want to go ahead and share your.
Sure, uh we'll call Commissioner Culerson here to read.
Here.
Doug here, Mike Smith on here, and Mr. Stephen.
Or would my please stand for pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the government of the United States of America and to the republic of its citizens. For the nation, for their job, in this difficult, but very important justice for all.
I'd like to call for a moment of silence, please.
Thank you all. I want to thank the Leavenworth County Board of Commissioners for attending here this evening. As the mayor of Baser, I love the idea of our bodies taking time to meet, continue our work in providing quality service to our residents and business owners. It is wonderful to welcome you to this joint meeting in our new city hall. I hope you all agree it's much more comfortable than the last time we met in twenty twenty three.
Just a little.
Just a little, yeah. Before I hand it over to Matty Batten, our deputy chief administrator, to share a presentation on what we have happening here in Baser. I want to express a few thank yous. First, a big thanks to Leavenworth County staff for reaching out to coordinate this important meeting. Second, to the staff team here in Baser who coordinated all the details of tonight's meeting. A huge thank you to Meemaw's Bakery owned and operated by Ms. Lorraine Walden for tonight's fantastic meal and desserts. I hope each of you will support Meemaw's Bakery as they will be featured a vendor at the Fairway Meat and Grocery here in Baser in a few short months. Uh hopefully, they're hoping to be open by Thanksgiving, so. While I went to express a sincere thank you to each of the county commissioners for your contribution and support of one hundred and fifty fifth street project. I hope you've all had a chance to go down that street in the day and night because it is absolutely gorgeous and.
A little different.
Yes, and it is, it it finished off that whole area there.
Is it?
And actually, I think we raised the price of uh the houses on that street because it is really gorgeous.
I just, I just drove through it. But I was like, I could see all the world I, I think it's fantastic.
Yeah, well, if if you were here late enough tonight, which I hope you notice our. Make sure you drive down there with it, with the lights on because it is just absolutely beautiful, so. Matty gives the best presentations here, so Matty, please share the exciting things we have happening here in Baser.
No pressure. Thank you, Mayor. Uh Matty Mountain Deputy City Administrator honored to to speak about all the wonderful things that we have happening here in Baser. Uh before we start, um you know, staff will be going over just a few things that the city has happening, but obviously incredibly respectful of our elected officials and the Leavenworth County Commissioners in the meeting, so if there are questions or comments or discussion points that you think are appropriate, please interrupt me um or or interrupt us and and talk about it at that time. This is designed to be um hopefully informational, but also a a discussion spurring activity. Um also, Leavenworth County Commission did um send two topics that they would like to discuss, and we've built that into our presentation to facilitate that conversation. So just a little bit of fast facts about Baser. Uh we do have a double A plus bond rating from S and P Global Ratings. We've had that for two debt issuances, and it was upheld in twenty twenty five. We've got a quote from S and P Global Ratings regarding their determination of the credit rating, um and so we're very, very proud of that. Um we did receive an unmodified opinion, which, as you know, is an is the highest rate of opinion that we can receive from our external auditors. Our estimated population is about eighty two hundred, or the third safest city in Kansas and the second fastest growing city in Kansas. So we've completed several high-profile projects in in the past year. Uh first, as the mayor mentioned, is one hundred and fifty fifth street. And again, we just want to say a very sincere thank you to Leavenworth County for your contribution to make that possible. Without your contribution, the city would not have been able to move that project forward, so um from all of us in our community, thank you so very much for your support. Next is our civic campus, which we're sitting in our brand new city hall. We have our city hall, a splash pad, an event lawn, an amphitheater, a robust trail network, a fishing pond, just a lot of really great public amenities for the community to enjoy. Then we also have, we've constructed a lot of trails in our community. Prior to twenty twenty one, the only trail network that the city had was at Baser City Park. And now we have over three miles of trails that folks can walk and bike safely in our community. And of course, um grant funding was a huge um driver in us constructing those projects. We're really excited that we're able to put the civic campus to use, and you see some drone footage in the black background of our Basers Blooming Festival. We have that May first annually, and that's when we turn on the splash pad for the season. Um this was the first year that we had Basers blooming, and we had over a thousand people in attendance, so we were honored to have that. Um we have cinema Sundays on the second and fourth of Sundays, uh starting at seven P M. We have a movie. The movie coming up this Sunday is Sandlot, and actually, our interns put together uh baseball trading cards of all of our elected officials. So our elected officials are being in attendance, trading their baseball cards, and the mayor is gonna. Hopefully not.
I'll sign yours.
And then there will be um walking through the crowd and throwing bags of peanuts like what you see at a baseball stadium, so we're really excited about that. We have concerts every third Thursday through the month of August. We have the mayor's annual golf tournament. Um we sell it quickly for that tournament, so if you're interested in golfing, please sign up early. Um I think last year we sold out in seventy two hours, so it goes quickly. Um we have a run-walk five K. We're doing a skeleton run-walk. Um um and it will be Halloween themed uh for the kids to enjoy and also adults. We've got that coming up in October, and of course, the mayor's tree lighting that we have annually at the civic campus. So some of the projects that we have happening, of course, you see one hundred and fifty eighth street is under construction. We were fortunate to receive five point one million dollars in grants from the Mid-America Regional Council. Well, we're adding turn lanes, streetlights, we're putting a sidewalk on on the opposite side of the street where you see the trail now, uh and we're estimated to complete that before the end of the year. Next is the trails around the civic campus, really connecting all the wonderful things that you see happening up here with the fishing pond that you see at one hundred and fifty ninth and parallel. It's a one mile of trail, and you can see some drone footage of that on the screen. We received one point five million dollars in in grants, and we're hoping to have that completed by September of this year. Also Tomahawk Park, we opened that in in twenty twenty three. Um the land was donated to the city in twenty twenty one, and we also received a fifty thou- fifty thousand dollar grant for phase one. Phase two includes a parking lot off of one hundred and fifty fifth street, restrooms and a park shelter, and that should be wrapping up in the next few months. We also received a grant to completely reconstruct the trail network at City Park. Currently, it's a six-foot wide um asphalt trail, while replacing it with a ten-foot wide concrete trail in the existing areas, um so that that will be a much-needed improvement uh to our existing city park. We're also um uh we're we're very fortunate to receive one point six million, almost one point seven million dollars from Mid-America Regional Council for the Coral Berry Trail, which essentially connects um Hidden Ridge off of one hundred and sixty sixth street to all the wonderful things that you see happening here. Um so it'll be great to connect that neighborhood and give them an opportunity to walk and bike to the civic campus. And then near our downtown, at the Baser Town Center, we received two point five million dollars in grants for trails um that will create uh walking and biking opportunities near downtown. And I mentioned grants a few times uh in our presentation. We're really proud that since twenty twenty, we've received twenty two million dollars in grants. That's about six times the amount of property taxes that the city collects in a single year. So what that means is for the last five years, every year, we've collected more in grants and external funding than we did in property taxes. And that's why we've been able to complete all these significant improvements without increasing the city's mill rate. The city's mill rate has remained flat since twenty eighteen. And an additional reason why we're able to do all those significant improvements is because we have really strong building per- permanent activity. Our permanent activity is on track to exceed the city's projections for the third year in a row. We have multiple developments under construction, primarily single families. Um we have had a longstanding practice, the city will only entertain uh voluntary annexations. And this year, this governing body approved resolution twenty twenty five dash zero seven that solidified and and put into policy the city's longstanding practice to only entertain voluntary annexations. And since twenty twenty one, the city has had a very strong emphasis on economic development. And as the mayor said, we're very excited in late twenty twenty five, we're going to be welcoming Fairway Meat and Grocery, which is the first fairway meat and grocery in Kansas. Now, I know they have some meat markets, they have a meat market over in Olathe, but it's a much smaller footprint. This is a twenty one thousand full-service grocery store, and when we visited them in West Des Moines, we knew that we had to have them. They're the perfect fit for us, they're family-oriented, um they understand our community, they support our community, and we're just so honored um that they chose us. So economic development, we know, is a is a discussion point um amongst all governing bodies in Leavenworth County at this time. Um our goal is to attract the right businesses for Baser so that we can diversify the tax base. Since we put a strong emphasis on econom- economic development, the percentage of our assessed value of commercial property has increased from seven point eight percent to nine point six percent. Um I did put a star on the screen because this denotes that this was a discussion topic that was requested by the Leavenworth County Commissioners. Um in twenty twenty four, the city chose to not renew its member- membership with the Leavenworth County Development Corporation. Uh the city has given direction that we do not intend to renew um for twenty twenty five or twenty twenty six. Um we have tried to do our own economic development, and that has been very successful. Uh the city administrator and I attended the ICSC conference in Las Vegas. We got several leads from that. Uh and so we're really excited. The city's gonna be making some very major announcements related to economic development very soon. Um so Mayor, with your permission, I'll pause there to kind of open it up for discussion to be respectful of the of the uh request to discuss this item.
Absolutely. That was the first time y'all attended the uh conference?
Yes, sir.
That's that's a good conference. That's how we got quick trip and I hop as I was talking earlier, I think this is the mayor. We used to go out there almost every year, took about five years, but we found you gotta get yourself on the map, so it was as busy as I told you it was gonna be.
Oh, yes. But we we made a splash. We we got matching T-shirts, and we were the only city there that had matching T-shirts. So vendors were very appreciative of that. We had, you know, a USB drive with information about Baser. We had little push cards, so we really tried to put our best foot forward.
That's great.
Not only T-shirts, but it would say.
Yes.
Ask us about Baser.
Yes.
So very specific.
Yep, and and people did. I mean, developers would stop us in the in the hallway, in the elevator. I mean, I, we would talk to anybody. It it didn't matter. I'll tell you about Baser.
Why not?
You want to build here? I'll I'll stop in this elevator and talk to you. So um the Leavenworth County Commissioners requested to discuss LCDC, so um Mark will will turn the floor over to you and and your commissioners for what would like to be discussed.
I like how they all look down the table. I assure you, this was their topic. However, um now I think it's, you you already indicated you're not renewing for the next couple of years with LCDC. Um I I think our challenges with the LCDC are all very public because our meetings are public, so. And of course, you all watched your last thing.
Yeah.
The fourth, we're in their presentation, so we're familiar with how that went as well. Uh but as far as questions, you know, I think I think the new commissioners, if they want to discuss that topic, or if they had any other ideas about it. And then before we start that, just a reminder that they probably haven't received the invite yet, but on August sixth in Tonganoxi, we at six P M. We're going to be holding a economic development summit to discuss this, and we're inviting all the cities and school boards and. So you'd be receiving that invite probably tomorrow.
And even though you're not part of LCDC, we really hope that you will come and share your opinions.
That's not as a part of it. It they don't have any invite, but it's this is just all of us. This is a menu. You want to do it, you only do it.
Yeah.
You know, the only thing I I would say before I let Mike get going there is we asked to have a person on the executive board, or we were not going to fund them in law with the port authority, and I I sit on the port authority now, the firm, and you're rep, and um. I don't know if he's speaking of county commissioners, but we wanted some more representation in what we're getting. Um it's been said at a couple of meetings, that's the reason we downplayed or took the three hundred thousand down to eighty thousand, whatever it is now, is because of trying to go revenue mutual. That's not true. We weren't trying to go revenue mutual. We were looking at what it brings to the table. And we we tried, we've got some good people working there, but it's been a big challenge for us to really see that, so we've always told them that, you know, we only get, we only get budget money from property tax. We don't get sales tax unless we do a project together. So we told them they had to figure out a way to fund themselves. I think that's why they're trying to do this um uh this project to see if they, the at the voters. Yeah, the voters will push it. Now, honestly, that's exactly what they need, but the climate right now for taxes, especially property tax, thing like that, I can tell you is not, it's not very pleasant, so that's just my two cents on where we we've come with it. It started going down when I came on the county. I don't think that was my fault all along, or my issue all along, because when I was with Lansing, I had these same questions that we're, we are dealing with right now, so it's, I don't know where we're gonna go. They have to, we have to make a decision on that, but that's just a little bit of the history we're talking about. Mike.
Now, the only thing I was gonna say, when it comes to LCDC, there are two sides, because they have done some good things. Uh in Tonganoxi, there's the Hills Pet Nutrition and DSM, they'll be involved in getting them. Now, there's some debate as who was the city more involved or was the. Was the LCDC more involved? LCDC is more than willing to take credit, so I will give them credit. I'll give them credit that they helped to get that there, and earlier, I think it was a couple of years ago now. Commissioner Smith and I had a committee meeting with them, and we sort of wrote a draft uh of what the role of the county would be, what the role of the cit- uh of the port authority would be, and what the role of the uh LCDC would be. And it was kind of, the LCDC was gonna be the marketing arm. The port authority was gonna be sort of a, it's a quasi-governmental organization. They can actually own own property. They can hire employees, so you could actually have them running industrial park if you had an industrial park or you want to. Uh in some locations like the rail access, the port authority folks will run the inside the plant, but so port authority has a certain role, and then the county was gonna have uh the role of not paying for their day-to-day operations in LCDC or or authority, but rather, if there's projects or if there's a proposal for a new industrial park, we're the funding arm for that, to help push that with funding. But what's happened, I think, is that the organization has not changed for many, many years. And I think it's, you you could go back and listen to their talking points from ten years ago, and I don't think it would be that different from the same talking points we're getting now. I think, I I think the problem is that we don't have a uh a plan to work together, and if you don't have a plan, it just kind of becomes, you know, these developers and these bankers, and it it becomes kind of a club. And I really would like us to see it become uh where we're working together. I think one of the reasons they're funding from from the county's gone down, and I'm only speaking for myself, is I don't feel like we're communicating, I don't think the communication is good. And and I think that's why I I just don't feel like they're working together with us and we're working together with them, and 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 I think they're gonna have to, we're together gonna have to get there, or we just can't keep dishing out billions of dollars.
Yeah, one thing to add to that too is I, and I told them this, I'm not talking, when I came back on the fourth of January, I said, people don't trust you. And and the reason I don't trust you is because you got bankers, you got engineers, you got corporations and stuff like that that are part of the board. You need to get some other folks on this board because they look at it and say, okay, they got the inside knowledge, so they'll make the buck on this. They may benefit from that, and of course, they they didn't say that, and they've got some good people on it, don't get me wrong, but let's let's be honest. If you worked for a corporation, you've got the inside angle on something, you'd be silly not to go with it, so what I suggested at that meeting, and this has been back in January, February, that you to look at your board makeup. And I'm not just talking about the regular board members, but say, I'm talking about that executive board who was working these deals and doing these things, because I don't think, we don't get to know until the last minute. I'll give you an example, the Tyson Chicken. What did that go up and smoke? Because you got to, now I'm talking, because you got to, you got to educate people, you got to be transparent to a certain degree, and I don't think that's happening. And and again, there's a lot of good people on that board, some I've known for years. One was on my, I ran for mayor, it's one of my on my campaign team, and I've shared this with him, but I don't know if I'm getting through, so.
Yeah, I I just want to make sure you guys uh receive the invitation. I talked to council member Sherry earlier about it. Um but we're inviting everyone from the state level, senators on downstate, some in county, all the city levels, school board. We just want to bring everyone to the table with their county development, um port authority, LCDC, and then we're gonna invite, we see.
Oh, the, yeah, LCDC was gonna invite the base case. If the city are in. I gotta watch it when I say that else.
So I hope you'll join us. There's no set agenda, um and uh so we'd love to just get input from everybody. I'd really like to see a way forward, um like Commissioner Stephen talked about, um where everyone's taken into consideration. Hopefully, we can kind of define a clear path, you know, like a three-year plan, I think would be great for the county to have some vision. So that's kind of what I'm hoping.
The last meeting that we had with um Lansing, at the Lansing office, Commissioner uh Smith and I, I asked them straight up a question, what is, what is the money for? And how do, how do we know that you're taking our our tax dollars and you're funding them toward economic uh development? And the question I thought was pretty, was pretty simple, but I saw there was a big relevancy into giving us an accounting of how these dollars are actually being spent. That is something that that I just like, well, if you can't tell me how many of my of my of my money they're just spending, then I'll hold my money. And 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 they didn't, they didn't care for that, and that's okay, that's really okay. But uh perhaps this this next meeting that we're gonna have with them, they'll bring some some more light to to take. I'm not expecting anything more than what I got before, but I'm willing to give them a a chance to say, well, this is what we are going to do, and this is our agenda. And we'll say, okay, well, how can we hit with that agenda, but to pay for everyday expenses of the organization, I don't see that working out.
And one other thing to say on that, yes, you know, other places I've been around, or one place I've been in, that was a while ago, I'm not sure, but we're sitting now. Uh the county has a uh economic part. Uh we tried to have a summit many work, but what I thought might be interesting is if LCDC is not playing this, but maybe all the entities have a part of this, our, maybe this reps from everybody. I'm not saying, you join, y'all doing a great job. I mean, but just to put everybody together, representation from elected officials or whatever, and have them overseeing this, because they've got a, they've really got a big stake in this, this is their community. It's just, I don't know if we're, you know, saying, I don't know, we're looking outside the box to see, is there a better way to do economic development, and maybe this will come out with a thing Vanessa was was uh saying up for us, because I just think there's an answer to some of them. So what do y'all uh give us your perspective on the?
I agree with you, and I mean, I think there's gonna have to be a major overhaul with the whole thing between Port Authority and uh LCDC before we'll even be interested in in coming back. Um there, like Commissioner Doug just said, there is no communication. I've been three mayor, three and a half years, not one time ever heard from anybody from LCDC. Uh and not only that, after we decided not to go with them that night, you would have thought they would have called me the next day and said, hey, can we sit down and talk about this? Silence, haven't heard a thing. So before we go any farther at all, for this group, I think, you know, I think I speak for everybody. There's gonna have to be a major overhaul on things that's happening with that department before we even consider.
And that may be the reason we're all going, don't we just get there slowly?
Right.
Because if, you know, y'all pulled out one time and you came back and pulled up, when I was the mayor and city manager in Lansing, I don't know how many times we almost pulled out. And it was just by, you know, skin of teeth, they stayed in, and I don't know where we're at on it right now. But that's what I'm saying. I don't know if it's outgrown, we've outgrown that type of setup, and we can do a better job with every, with some other kind of system. I agree. I'm not, I'm, Mayor, I'm certainly not telling you to go back to LCDC, because I, you said, you see where we stay at on the funding. I just think if we're, with the working together as partners, in our way we set it up, you can get something accomplished.
Well, I'll make a couple of comments, and this is just reiterating what I said at the Port Authority meeting, so if you watch the videos, you know. Um one is you can't continue to do the same thing year after year and expect a different outcome, so obviously you need to make changes. Two is you need to go meet with the cities, and not four, there are six cities. So you've forgotten Easton.
Yeah.
And you've forgotten Leavenworth.
Yeah.
So those are cities that are growing. They need to be involved. And um I just feel like if you're not going and visiting with those individuals in those cities and finding out, what do you want? Do you want industrial park? Where do you want it? Do you need commercial? Do you want commercial? Where do you want it? So you're asking for money continually, year after year, but you've never asked for the needs or the wants of your communities that you're supposedly representing.
Yeah, when I'm, when I was the mayor, and it's a mission, one thing, the first thing I did when I got elected is that, when my first business in office, so I went down to LCDC for it. Says, y'all gotta get up and come out here and talk to the city, and talk to us and talk to our business, help our needs out. I think that happened one or two times, but then we. I think that happened one, one or two times, but then we forgot. You know, when we brought QuickTrip down. We didn't have any help from them. City of Lansing, man, did what y'all did to bring it in, I asked for help for land, and they, they gave me a phone number, but I didn't want to lose COOP. So we end up getting place off, uh. It's Gilman down there, because I wanted to keep COOP in Lansing, they didn't broker that deal, there's a lot of evening meetings, and you know. The farmers that own COOP, they're really tight with their money, so we had to make a pretty doggone, good, uh, uh. We're the middleman for it, QuickTrip paid for it, but that's, that's the kind of way you do it, if you don't attend these things and talk to people eyeball to eyeball, you're not gonna get anything. Thing, I, I tell you, QuickTrip and Aldi's, when we had Aldi's, I. Uh, this is, this is fifteen years ago. I brought Aldi's in, and the council was arguing over a ten thousand dollar sewer line, because the sewer at that time used to run the Leavenworth. And they, they said, no, if you're gonna build all, take all these from us, which is not the truth, but we, we're gonna make you pay for it, so, you know, I signed off on that ten thousand dollar sewer line so we can. Set our place up, because the commissioners were upset about that, folks, you gotta take. You, everybody, whether you're on that LCDC, county say, you gotta take a look at the value of that, and all these. People were saying, well, Aldi's are getting very close when QuickTrip came in, no, they didn't, they grew thirty-three percent. That's what, you know, when rumors get out, and then the rumors, they grew thirty-three percent, but I think the communication. It's what I've heard here is, is, it's been a key, but it's not just a communication, you can tell me what you want. Me to hear when you're sitting in front of it. If the example for me, when I get, if you don't follow up or anything with it, and it, it happens every year, it, it's just lip service.
Yep, and a clarification to the meeting, because I did watch your. Meeting the other day, uh, Mr. Cause stated that the county doesn't fund LCDC. That was a statement that we didn't want them, well, that's not accurate, we fund. Port Authority, and it's a pass through the LCDC. And that, that's an example for communication, you know, he should have, he knows that, he should have clarified that. And, uh, I, and I like Mr. Cause, he's a great guy, I, I, I like Harlan Russell, he's a great guy, and, and done a lot of good things. But as far as, I feel like it's just stagnating. I feel like economic development in Leaven County has stagnated. And we, we tried, we, we had Tom Cole, we tried to do it. And unfortunately, I'll, we'll, we'll take responsibility, if that didn't work out as, as good as we thought it should.
Willie and I weren't there then.
You know, I've been involved in LCDC since they were there. Yep, and, you know, back in the old days, they, they had set aside a bill. Uh, specific for. Like lab, economic development, and specifically for lab. So, you know, for six years now, I've been telling Harlan, um, you guys need to find another source of income in the county, because. It's getting impossible for us to talk to taxpayers and be. Thinking this is a great idea to spend their taxpayers on, because the, the general perception of the public. Is, economic development is a luxury, not a necessity. Which they're wrong, but that's what their perception is. And, you know, if you don't get out there and do a big PR campaign, I don't know if you guys are gonna be successful getting votes, you know, to stay in business. So, uh, that kind of led me into what I want to bring up about Vanessa's meetings she's putting together, I'm hoping what can come out of that. Uh, depending on what happens at LCDC, I think we should, uh, put together a combined team. Of all the city economic development directors, you know, whoever you have doing that job, or if you have a specific person with that job title. Uh, it doesn't matter, we just need a team of each city represented. Uh, made up of people who are accountable, and that's, I think, been the biggest problem with LCDC over the years, is this. No, they're not accountable to anybody.
Did you read my notes?
Is that what you were gonna say?
That was my next.
Sorry, sorry. And, uh, and that's all I really had, other than, uh, that committee, I'm hoping that we put together. Uh, needs a champion, and that's my segue into the Eastern Gateway. If, if the biggest problem with LCDC is they don't have a product. Nobody, business doesn't want to come here when you're an hour from Kansas City. So the Eastern Gateway fixes that problem, making you six minutes from a quick trip to that airport, totally changes the game, just ask Liberty, Missouri. You guys haven't been to Liberty, Missouri lately? Take, take a little drive, it's amazing, and their city councilman told them. One fifty-two, exactly why we're, hey, we're cutting taxes in half, we can't even keep up with industrial, commercial, and residential. Progress, because of the connection one fifty-two, great. So that's what I'm hoping, as we can come up with a combined city team and the, uh, champion, the Eastern Gateway, because. If you don't have a product, if the Eastern Gateway bridge was here, LCDC's job would be simple. You know, they wouldn't have to go look for leads before we knocking the doors there, just ask Liberty, Missouri. That's all I said, sorry. Sorry if I stole some of your.
But that's, that's what.
You can't leave your notes laying there.
Because, you know, I hate to see like. The city over here doesn't seem to have direction, the city over here is booming. Um. Without knowing if we could have collaboration between the cities, work together to make the county booming, instead of being spotted depending on. Their independent cities, so if, if there's space for us to learn from each other and grow together, I think that would be great.
Let's go for your neighbors, good for you.
You know, I think of return on investment.
Right.
LCDC, Port Authority, at zero, I mean, we've been giving this money, what have we got that? I think, ten years?
Oh, twenty.
Yeah, twenty.
We're paying three hundred thousand dollars a year.
So you, you're getting to our point, right? Very simple questions of what are we getting back on our money, we're not getting anything, or at least we haven't yet, so what's the opportunity? What kind of commercial can you bring in, retail, what can you get to us, you saying all we do is industrial, that's the only thing that we'll bring to you. And we have a very small industrial park, and there's no opportunity for anything else, so. Let's stop for a second, we're not getting any return on investment, really aren't talking about any opportunity. So I go back to, let's get a plan, let's, let's get people together, let's do these things, but it didn't seem like they wanted to do that. They didn't want to get together, they, they were just like, give us money, here's our products, but the product isn't something that we're willing to buy.
But you, 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 you're, you're so far out there is, is this, they don't understand and see. That this is what has to be done in order for us to talk to our taxpayers. In a reasonable manner and let them know, this is what you're getting for your tax dollars, so I'm very interested. In seeing what educational seminar, seminars that they're gonna put together, to see what they're gonna present to the general public, so, so the public can say, okay. I'm glad we're not giving you any more money, or in a reverse, it'll be great. But we need to see something substantial that's gonna give us some evidence that they're doing what they say, exactly what they're going to, to do. And, uh, allow taxpayers to get some kind of relief, you know, dollars that we're actually spending, because, because everyone knows we're spending too much money. In our, in our, uh, 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 property taxes, and we're not getting anything for, and they're, and. They were expecting all these things to, to happen, uh, I, I would be, Paul, three hundred thousand dollars a year in twenty years? You haven't given me anything for, those are, those are pretty, pretty big numbers, so all I see is clerical staff being, having a job. That they don't have to be accountable for anyone else, except the people that are working for them, and they're all. I get a little crazy with this, and they're all in it together. Which makes me believe. They aren't continuing doing that, but if you got education program, bring it on, let's see what you got, and then let's, let's let the taxpayer. Uh, I make a, make their mind, when they receive that, we're giving them over, what, three million dollars?
And one point, just, just to note. They should be here. They should be here, they knew we were meeting together with one of the cities. Uh, the economic development folks should be here, they should be here in the audience, or they should be even at the table.
I would be, I told him, um, a couple of months ago, I, because I said in Port Authority. So I didn't think it was any other way they were gonna get any funding, I told him, this, if they go to a vote on this, Melon, this is a high risk maneuver. Yeah, this fails, this is telling me that the citizens. Don't want it either, so if they don't want what you're doing, why should I be paying for it? Well, I, I think that's why it says, I, I, as I said before, Vanessa said, I was like, I think. Just after this is all said and done, we go through the, the joint one, just to have a meeting with the cities, and I agree, there's. Easton and Lundwood also, uh, should sit down if nothing else, just to see if it'd be worth forming a committee, just to talk, and it doesn't take away from anything what y'all are doing. But like that, just to have some form of contact with each other, where we're hearing each other's concerns, instead of just what somebody's feeding us.
And that's what's important to me. Getting together, talking face to face. Building trust is a big step.
Yes, it is.
Communication is everything. I'm the new person on a council. I needed to be educated in terms of LCDC. What's the purpose? We're putting, I understand, money into it, what are we getting in return? Lisa presented. Just shortly after I came on the council. And so she said, Baser had no industrial development, no sign for it. And, uh. I asked. What is Baser getting from LCDC? And she said, nothing directly. And it's like, okay, wait a minute. It's not bashing somebody, it is communicating and being direct. And Lisa did come back to me, and she said, Vicky, I answered that poorly, I would like to. To help you understand. She told me that's life. And it never happened. I set up a meeting. And fortunately, Jeremy, Lisa, Dania. All met with me, and I said, this is just me, it's not the council. I need to understand, communication is everything. What I heard was basically, we know what we're doing. We have an industrial basis. And there was no way that we were intersecting. And I tried to explain, what I am hearing, we have no industrial basis. You hear the intangibles. Well, you need some tangibles in going forward. And so I left that meeting going. I'm respectful of what you are saying you are doing. But for us, the money that we're getting, giving. After all these years that I hear about. We need at least communication. And that wasn't happening. So when we hear they need to educate us. Because we probably don't understand all the benefits. I'm going, oh, wait a minute, we are making a very educated decision, and we want to be straightforward with you on it. And I was at Falcon Lakes when the League of Women Voters had a forum there. And they brought in all the economic development around the county. Because they were saying, we have so many different economic developments in the county. But we don't believe the left hand knows what the right hand is doing. And pull together, help each other out. You see nothing of that, you can't, I mean, that's why as a city, we're going, economic development is everything to us. We need to be prepared for it, not running after it. And that's why we've taken those steps that we have, and we have the talent that we have. To be able to do it, get the grants, get the businesses. We want to be team players. We have to survive together. But we gotta talk to do it.
And that's the, that's the key, if you've got people that are sitting on those boards, and they're talking to each other, but they're not talking to us, we're not talking to each other. Left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing, that's what I'm saying, down the line of committee, or whatever y'all would think after we had this. This meeting in a, a month or so, or a few weeks, and so, just starting it out that way, because we've got to at least show them that we, we can do this. We don't really need you to do this, we can have these communications without you, you're not listening, I remember when I met with them when I was the city manager, they said, told me. Mike, you do not have a, uh, this is for Lisa, you do not have an industrial park, and our mission statement is not what, does not go along with what you need. I said, but I'm putting money in, and I know what's good for the counties, good for the city, what's good for the city, I agree with the one down south, on some of the plans being brought in like that. I don't know if they're not presenting a program, but I think it's more than just not listening to what we're saying, and I think that's why we have to. We have to, we have to start working to get a little closer.
I think it's ironic that Baser, which if you argue, if you want to argue economic development and growth for the county. You are number one. Absolutely number one.
You guys all over it.
Far none, and the growth is spectacular, that the fact that the. Economic Development Corporation and the Port Authority are not all over that. I think that speaks a lot.
You know what, that's what, the way it is, you've got a council. Right here. You've got experts down there that took the trip out there to talk to people, and they mean to do it. I don't, I don't know John Jakes, and I brought him on as the, uh, planner, uh, director. And Lansing, and Leaven County's gone from like twenty houses, a, in the last three years, to about eighty or ninety, the only person that's meeting us in homes out in the county is Baser. So I'm glad to see that we're at least doing that much, but i- if you don't have the right people sitting in the positions with the right attitude, it doesn't matter. You really, you've got a great staff up here, and Mayor, you've done a fantastic job leading this place, and you guys are doing, everybody should be looking at a model. When I was in Lansing years ago, we thought we were the model, uh, all those homes we were building, all those residents. And then somebody made Mike Riley mad, and, uh, next thing I know, he's. It wasn't me, believe me. But, you know, because that goes with the RHID and other stuff that we're having to deal with too, all of us have to deal with, but I think the people in position that are professionals. On, and cities. Are, are the, the kind of members we need to have on, on boards, because they know what's going on in the community, they relay it on to the next. Uh, city or the next county or whatever, this other stuff just doesn't, it's just not working. Anyway, I've said enough, listen.
That's why I was hoping some of the school boards would show up from different cities, because they have to vote on these RHIDs as they come through, if they make it through the city. Like Lansing's just did. On river.
Yeah.
Uh, so I want to make sure that they. Are informed when these things come across them. Well, I hear economic development, which is something we're very interested in. But my conversation with Jeremy, Diana, and, uh, Lisa. Was definitely industrial, as a matter of fact, Jeremy's focus with me was. Building that roadway between Kansas and Missouri, that was the focus. And I know you could need some teamwork for some of that. But we need more of that one way.
I agree.
Well, thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, um, if it's okay with you, we can continue on the presentation, we have a few more slides. Um, we've taken a lot of notes. I'll try to get through the last few slides as quickly as we can, I know we want to try to get wrapped up in maybe fifteen, twenty minutes. Um, so we have a, an area of the city called Basertown Center, and we wanted to go over this with the county commissioners, um, just to answer maybe any unresolved questions. Uh, just for, for some history of the property, it's right across the street from Old City Hall at a hundred and fifty-fifth and Baser Boulevard. It surrounds the Baser Intermediate School and is about two hundred and forty acres. In two thousand and seven, there is an original development plan that was approved, and the public infrastructure was funded at that time through an issuance of tip notes, uh, for the public improvements. The tip notes were then, um, renewed in twenty ten, and then at the end of that renewal period, uh, the governing body at the time elected to issue general obligation debt for those improvements. Um, certainly don't like to play Monday morning quarterbacking, um, but we would have probably recommended special obligation bonds or something similar, um, to that. So this is a breakdown of what should have happened, or what was estimated to happen if, if all went well. So the, the city was positioned to receive about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars of special assessments. The bond payments were about two hundred and one thousand dollars, so the city would have an average net position at the end of each year of fourteen thousand. But unfortunately, that's not what happened, uh, on average, the city received about seventy-eight thousand dollars worth of special assessments. The bond payments, of course, did not change, because they are, just as they sound, general obligation bonds, we have to pay them regardless of what happens, so the city has been, um. So the city has been um subsidizing this particular um uh property uh to the tune of a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars a year. Uh, uh, since, since that um occurred, so um. The, this is what has actually happened since tw- from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-two. Um, so the city's received about seven hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in special assessments, but the bond payments have been just shy of two point one million. So the city's net position on this property um has been a negative about one point three million um from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-two. Ouch, ouch is correct. Um, so what would have happened until twenty thirty-two through the life of the bond? If this governing body didn't step in and intervene and, and my words stopped the bleeding. Um, the city would have had a negative net position of about two point one million dollars um because of. You know, decisions that were made uh through previous administrations, previous governing bodies. Um, so to stop the bleeding, um, the city intervened and acquired the property through um. Uh, a negotiated settlement in twenty twenty-one, we got ninety-seven acres and then we purchased the balance in twenty twenty-three. Um, the city did have to increase its mill rate for the bond and interest to fix the structural imbalance. Uh, because the mill rate was not positioned to be able to uh pay that debt o- on an annual basis. So the city had to increase its mill rate in twenty eighteen. Um, this has now been created into a, a tax increment financing TIF district. Um, this is the city, city's only TIF district, the city does not have an interest uh to create any additional TIF districts. But this was created in order to um promote quality development this, in this area. This was a burden on the city for many, many years, and because of intervention on the part of this governing body. Now we're able to develop the property and able to return it to the tax base um as soon as we can, so. Those are our goals, is to make the city whole on this property, property. And then also to return the, the improvements to the full tax base, to all taxing authorities as soon as possible. Um, so I know you probably get a lot of questions about the TIF district, so just wanted to um. Uh, discuss sort of the history and the reasoning behind the creation of the district. And this is the master plan for the area, you can see it's a mix of a commercial property along a hundred and fifty-fifth street. Transitioning into um, you know, some single family, maybe some townhomes, roadhomes, some multifamilies. Um, and then we also have a significant amount of parkland dedicated um for future park space, a farmer's market. We really envision a, a vibrant area, um, we are under contract for um. The, I guess, upper part to the left, um, uh, where, where the multifamily you can see. Um, and then also the commercial space uh to the north of Baser Boulevard. Um, we went through an R F Q process for a developer and so um the city has entered into an agreement and we're currently, the, that developers in their due diligence phase, so. We're really excited to return this property, instead of a burden on the taxpayers, it's going to be um a vibrant space the community can enjoy. And then we'll be generating uh tax revenue for the taxing authorities. Of course, you know that we um uh sponsored a speed reduction petition that the mayor announced um earlier this year. We were requesting KDOT to reduce the speed limit from fifty, uh, I'm sorry, from sixty-five to fifty mile per hour uh along State Avenue. As of today's day, we've received over sixteen hundred dollar, sixteen hundred dollars, sixteen hundred signatures in support. Um, the Kansas Department of Transportation did make an announcement that they are sponsoring um a pilot, a speed reduction pilot. And additional uh safety countermeasures in the area, uh, and they are reducing the speed limit from sixty-five mile per hour to fifty-five mile per hour. That pilot program is expected to launch late summer of this year. Our city administrator has met with KDOT several times on, you know, communication campaigns and additional signage that the city can purchase to promote safety through the corridor. Um, so that's the information that we can release publicly at this time. Um, this is again another topic that I know that this commission wanted to speak about, so Mark, I'll pause there for, for any questions or comments regarding this item.
We're invested. And I, and I know that we've had some fatalities and some issues. Uh, down this line, but I'm really, you know, all my years trying to get K Doctor to do speed, it's never successful. Usually it takes a death, to be honest, so it usually takes, they tell you that sometimes, cause the warrants or the engineering study doesn't say that, so. For whatever reason, to get him to lower that, that's all to you, cause I certainly would like to do it.
Well, myself, Sharon, Maddie, and Leslie all went to Topeka and testified. Or when they first offered sixty, I said, well, then don't lower it, sixty miles an hour, five miles an hour would not make a difference. As I explained to them, it said right on their own website that ten miles an hour makes a major difference. The, the young man that was killed here two weeks ago, uh, he still would have got hit. Because it was his fault, he pulled out in front. But if he would have been, the gentleman was going speed limit, i- if he would have been going fifty-five instead of sixty-five. It would have probably sent him to the hospital, might not have killed him, we'll never know that. But ten net miles an hour makes a major difference, so they came back with fifty-five, said absolutely will accept it. Because I don't think we'll ever get to fifty, these, KDOT is very hard to work with, as you, as you know, right? And so we're happy that we at least got ten miles an hour, especially with the grocery store opening in, in November, so.
Absolutely.
So the ma- the mayor and um KDOT will be making an announcement very soon um regarding the limits of from, from where. To where uh the speed reduction will happen, um, so we'll make sure to share that information with the commission.
Well, you know, I think of uh, for Manavix Beach, the Rhonda Andrews. From Tonganoxi, they were, they were built right here, right here.
Yes.
And so I don't know what the answer is, there could be a lot of deaths.
Well, we know we're not going to stop everything, the, the, when I got hit October the first. It was a, a young lady from Tonganoxi that. Though she never hit her brakes, said she was going sixty-five, I don't know, could have been seventy-five, but she never even hit her brakes because she was on her phone. We're never going to stop that, but you take, if it's sixty-five, that same car would hit me at fifty-five, they might not have had to remove me with the jaws of life. So ten miles an hour is, is a big difference, but we can't, we've got, at least it's a starting point. And hopefully we can get more turn lanes or anything eventually, but at least we've, we've gone this far.
Well, people have been clocked going over a hundred miles an hour there by our place to her.
Oh yeah, when I was in Lansing, we used to, he was exorbitant part, we didn't, we didn't mind writing them citations. So they'd come to the city about thirty, forty, there's all, you're never gonna be able to stop that, but at least we draw attention to it by signage. And things that have happened, and at least slow it down, so ten miles an hour, if you do a, a construction, uh, traffic accident construction. Mayor is absolutely right, that, that ten miles an hour is a big difference, especially if there's no braking or no skid marks or, or straight on collision, so. That's off to the goals, shame it had to take what it did to do that, so.
A number of years ago, we had the same issue at a hundred and fifty-eight than K thirty-two. There've been a lot of, lot of incidents. We asked them for a traffic study, KDOT. And they did, they did a traffic study and came back and said, we don't want to put uh. A light in, when they, what they did, they put a strobe light, if you come up out and follow, you'll see that's a little, little strobe light and a turn lane. But they, but when they did that study, they said, but the hill needs to be leveled. And the site needs to be changed, so they are going to put a, what they call circular intersection, what we all, the rest of us call.
Roundabout.
I know what I'm saying, there are. But they are, that is in the process of happening down there, though. Uh, I don't know how you solve that problem, but it's, there are some limitations.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's been deaths happening on those intersections. I've been here since two thousand, there's been high school kids killed every two or three years. Rather than sixty-eight or hundred and fifty-eight, and yes, so it's, at least it's a start.
I think the recent stoplights down there is two thousand and nine, it was a fatality.
Yes.
That happens at that time, so, there's a fatality and we asked that time for the same thing, traffic study, and we came back and said, well, not gonna lower the speed line before we put a stoplight.
You know, unfortunately, like they said, it takes fatality or two to kind of open their eyes.
Well, that's why we got the Sunday on uh, a hundred and fifty-eight, but the. Uh, upgraded roads, which means you had several fatalities. And it's too bad, but that takes that.
Yeah, it's.
So the city of Baser has entered into um a reimbursement agreement to promote um. Safety and, and commerce and, and just really great connectivity to Baser. Uh, to determine if it's feasible to have an interchange at I seventy and a hundred and sixty-sixth street. We know this is a priority project and we've made sure to let KDOT know that, or I'm sorry, the KTA know. That Loveworth County and Loveworth County Port Authority are incredibly stake, incredibly important stakeholders in that process. And we'll make sure to keep um the county updated on the progress of that. Um, in twenty twenty-five, we did some community, a, a community survey, the results were very favorable. Um, eighty-seven percent of respondents said that they're either very satisfied or satisfied with the overall, overall quality of life in Baser. And we are significantly rated higher than the national and regional averages. So we did the same survey in twenty nineteen, so we rated ourselves the top improvements from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five. We had a thirty-three percent increase in satisfaction with walking and biking trails. Twenty-four percent increase in satisfaction with maintenance of city buildings. Twenty-four percent increase in satisfaction with the city's efforts to inform residents about local issues. Twenty-two percent increase in satisfaction with the amount of city park space. And we were very proud of this one, twenty-one percent increase in satisfaction with how well the city is planning for new development. So um we were rated um in forty different categories, thirty-nine of, out of those forty categories. We exceeded the regional averages by more than five percent. We also, in thirty-nine out of those forty categories, exceeded the national average by more than five percent as well. The one category is adequateless, adequacy of city street lighting. Which are streetlights on a hundred and fifty-fifth street at the time of the survey were, uh, the controllers were on backorder, so we didn't have any streetlights on a hundred and fifty-fifth street. So hopefully during the next survey, that, that number will change. Uh, this is how we uh rate currently um with the region and also the, the national average. You can see Baser is in that Baser blue, the region is the light blue, and the United States is the gray. So you can see in, in all of these major categories, we outpace the, both the regional average and the national average by a significant amount. Uh, we're incredibly proud of that bottom number, forty-nine percent, a- almost half of our residents are either satisfied or very satisfied. With the value that they receive from their city tax dollars and fees, that represents an increase of eight percent from twenty nineteen. Uh, so if you remember in twenty nineteen, you know, home value, home values were a lot lower, tax bills were a lot lower, so for us to move the needle by eight percent. From twenty nineteen to current, um, we're very, very proud of that. So the survey included, okay, uh, well, how are we doing today, but also what's next for our community? No surprise, and I'm sure this is very similar with the county, the number one priority is reconstruction of city streets. You can see some before and after pictures of some of the roadways that we've improved in our community. Um, and we're trying to figure out a way how to improve them even more, uh, to be responsive to the residents' requests. Second is new sidewalks and trails, unfortunately, we've made some very good progress on that, but the residents want to see more. And then third is upgrading existing equipment and facilities at our parks. Um, so the city is positioned uh to make significant investments into our city park, uh, and then also uh maintain our existing parks. So I'm gonna talk just very briefly about our budget, we do a lot of budget presentations, I know the county also does a lot of budget presentations. Uh, we'll have another budget presentation tonight, um, I believe that our public hearings are on the same day usually, um, August twenty-seventh. Um, so sometimes we attend those, um, uh, our, our hearings are not as well attended as the counties. Um, but we appreciate the participation of our residents when they do come. Um, these are the, yeah.
You mean in the evening, correct?
Yes.
When you say our participation is, but.
Yes, yes. Um, these are our budget priorities and um we've worked a lot on this graphic to emphasize that these are priorities. And they work together to maintain Baser as a community of choice. So we're advancing trails and parks projects, we're a community where we take pride in our community and its safety. We're improving, modernizing and maintaining our roads, we're proposing no property tax rate increase. We are a desirable place to live, work and grow business, and we're continuing to promote fiscal transparency and stewardship. Um, this is one of our favorite graphics about where does your dollar go? Um, of course, you know, I'm sure the county thinks, um, you know, people think that a hundred percent goes to the county, some people think a hundred percent goes to the city. Some people, some people think a hundred percent goes to the school, so we just like to educate people that for every one dollar property taxes that you pay in the city of Baser. Twenty-three cents comes to the city, uh, twenty-six cents to the county, one cent to the state. Five cents to the fire district, forty-one cents to the school district, and four cents to the library. Um, of course, our value, um, uh, property valuation in the city of Baser has increased, uh, it increased uh seven point three six percent. About half of that is due to new development, and about half of that is due to appreciation of existing structures. Um, like we talked about earlier, we have not increased the mill rate since twenty eighteen, that mill rate was increased in twenty eighteen. Um, to fix the structural imbalance, and we don't predict uh a need to increase it in the future for that reason. Uh, we do continue to um advocate for a property tax evaluation cap. Um, just to um, you know, make sure that we're providing tax relief to the residents in the new homes that are being built, pay their fair share.
That was my recommendation, so I could take all the heat, I actually recommended a six mil increase, we only did three or three and a half.
Yep.
Um, and that ties right back into dealing with the. Funding and the issues that we had, that property, we're bringing it back into that time.
Yeah.
And we really hadn't addressed it for three or four years prior. So I made a really big request, and we could always kind of come up with some number that would. Carry us a while, at the same time, right, and then we started putting in place a lot of authorizations of. We're gonna set limits on how much we can borrow, how much we can set aside, obviously, the need for savings. That would go through all borders continuously, so.
Um, part of our standard budget process is we get information from the Lovewood County Appraiser. And we calculate, okay, if the city's gonna keep the mill rate flat, what does that mean for the average property owner? And we do that as sort of a value proposition, is three dollars a month increase for residential properties worth to be able to get these projects? Um, and we let, you know, obviously the community come in and give their thoughts on that throughout the budget process, so. Um, on average, if we keep the mill rate flat for the twenty twenty-six budget, um, the city portion of the taxes will increase about three dollars per month. For residential properties and about thirty-four dollars per month for commercial properties.
So what, what size house is that, is that a, you know, a thousand dollar old one?
The average, the average home in Baser is four hundred and five thousand dollars.
And I'm gonna, I know Maddie's trying to go real fast, but I need to brag on her a little bit. Everybody has the people that challenge the budget and you could do more, you could change. We have people in our community that are very vocal. After hearing Last Heart's budget, one of the people came up to Maddie and said. Okay, I'm not gonna protest now, you've explained it, so I don't see anything that I need to say further from there. Which was like, hmm, he may make up for it this year, but.
Well, I tell you, it's an excellent presentation, so you're saying, it's very clear.
Well, this is our, our final slide with content, uh, the city is um, will be holding a, the sales tax election on the November ballot. Um, it'll be two separate ballot questions, first will be, um, does the city support? Uh, a half of, a half of a percent special sales tax for improving the city's existing roadways? And the second is a half of a percent special citywide sales tax um for the purpose of bettering parks within city limits. And both of these would come with a tenure, so it's, and of course, because there are special sales taxes.
Did y'all, well, not too long ago, it failed.
We did, twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, we lost by thirty-some votes, I believe.
Yeah, it was close, what was that?
It was a one, it was a lot more general, there wasn't a specific percentage allocation, so it was for parks, park streets and police.
Yeah.
Um, one percent, um, it was general with a ten-year sunset. Um, and the feedback that we got is people want to know what, what would be funded.
Exactly.
And so we've, we've got a list prepared that's been approved by our governing body and.
Yeah.
Very specific.
It's very specific about what the dollars would go towards.
Will you be at the top of your sales tax?
Yeah.
I mean, what, 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 what will your sales tax overall be?
Um, so we're at eight point five percent now, so we'll be at nine point five percent, so we'll still be lower than um the legends. Um, I think we'll be very right on par with Bonner, I think Tonganoxi may be right around nine point five. So we'll be very competitive, that's one of the, um, we're getting updated numbers, so um, we want to make sure that we're not outpricing ourselves and. Um, but you know, if you go to the legends, you're paying, you know, almost eleven percent.
Yeah.
We still have one percent general capacity.
Correct, yeah, we, we will not be maxed out at that point, yep. So we'll be releasing that public information campaign starting um a week from Friday, August first. Um Mayor, that concludes um city staff's presentation. Thank you for hanging in there with us. We tried to get through a lot of information. Um it's an honor and a privilege to serve this community. Um it's an honor and a privilege to serve Leavenworth County as well, and we'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Excellent job, excellent job.
So I turned it over to her.
Yeah. Uh does anybody have any questions for us on anything, or? I just have something on on the, I don't know if you face these RHID uh slab home developments that are proliferating throughout the the county and are being proposed and.
Right.
Uh one concern I have is the storm uh shelter issue. We, like you're talking, I see they build all these homes and, you know, no access to storm shelters and they don't have. Uh so I think that's something to think about if you do, uh and and we brought this up with the county, too, if they're out in the county. There has to be some thought process on uh, you know, right now, going from the point where we have residential housing, most of it with basements, if we allow these to proliferate, uh and we don't make any kind of changes in the regulations at all, we will go from a point where we have a housing situation where everybody has basements to a housing situation, say, ten years down the road, where we have a significant number of houses of of our housing without tornado shelters. So I think if you're looking at planning for the future and and considering what's gonna happen down the road and being proactive, do you want that to happen in Leavenworth County? Do you want that to happen in Basin?
And I would just, I like that subject. With the job I'm in, we actually went went through three new subdivisions in Johnson County last week. Um Johnson County has two rules. They have quite a few of these going out, way more than we get right now. Um and they have two rules. One is either per so many number of homes, you will have a central site that is a storm center. But then what they required in the next two subdivisions by the same developer, it's either cool or weird, I don't know which, but in your garage floor, there's a door you open up, it's half this size. And there's a stairway, and it's a little eight by four foot wide storm shelter. But they required that, so the last two subdivisions went to, they require that in every home. Has an additional cost, and it's literally back your car up, flip it open, run down there and shut the door. Um and I'm only bringing that up because it's just weird. In the last week, I went visiting three of these sites and tried to take a look at what they're kind of doing, since they're ahead.
It reminds me of Oklahoma, they have those. I think they're more because of the dirt, if I understood correctly, isn't great for basements.
We used to live in Oklahoma, and ended up in Oklahoma. The west side of town has some. It's interesting, ended up on the, the west side of town is one of the wealthiest parts of the state of Oklahoma, and the east side of it is almost one of the poorest parts of of home. But uh but they they will tell you that they can't do basements, that they can't, they can't.
How does the city feel uh feel about RHID?
About what?
The RHID.
Did you face that yet? On those.
We've had several developers that it, I I will say this, an RHID has never made it in front of our city council. We've had several developers who have contacted us and expressed that in order to make their development work, they would require an RHID and staff standing responses. We can't prevent you from asking, but understand that it's gonna come with a recommendation from staff of disapproval. And it's at this time, um you know, our housing market is very hot. Uh we we don't need to incentivize housing.
Well, you got somebody that's buying land and developing, you know, instead of buying it up, buying the land and trying to sell it off, somebody make a double dip profit. It's a big difference. So when you own the land and and you're building the houses and you're getting sold, that makes a big difference on what you can do. I understand what you, what your thought process on that is. We're doing, we're having a bunch of them coming in front of us. By kind of a jack, but nobody has brought it to us yet as far on pay as formal one, but I'm sure that um.
It's made it to our zoning uh or planning.
Well, they were not requesting an incentive. They're asking about the incentive component of it. So we have had the, you know, smaller slab home development come in front of planning inside commission, and then ultimately the city council, and city council upheld the planning and needs recommendation of denial for the rezoning um of the project, but that project came forward without any request for RHID.
You have a neighborhood revitalization?
We do not. We had um one neighborhood uh revitalization um area and I think the school district, if I remember, or if you may have to jump in here, I think the school district maybe pulled out of that, I don't remember what year. But we, yeah, I mean, we have not had a neighborhood revitalization.
I guess, like I said, there's a lot of ways to get done what you want done, if you look, I mean, I I believe investors are gonna get something. There doesn't have to be a really high risk of what someone is seeing nowadays, so trying to get, we chop our dime. We don't have any dimes, so.
Well, I've never had it explained to me how, uh, let's say you're a developer and you bought an interior piece of property that's down in the floodway, and you, you come and you say, the only way we can develop this is if we get a RHID so that we can prove and lift that land up and break dirt in and do all the improvements and all the infrastructure. And I I've never stood, what, why is it a government responsibility to uh to bring your land that you knew was the fear when you bought it, so it could be developed? Because our job as government people is not to pick winners and losers and pick developers uh that are gonna get this benefit or not get this benefit when down the road four miles, they're doing it without incentives. And then you come and you want an incentive, I, it's, they haven't given me a good answer to that.
Well, the one that told us that they required um an RHID to mitigate the floodplain, said, well, we love parks in Baser, so if you want to donate the floodway as a park to the city, you, you know, will pay for your survey work. Um and then you can donate it and you can use that with your CPA and accountant as a tax write-off, but the fact is, the cost to develop the land and bring infrastructure is the same standard it is for every other home builder here and every other developer, so.
Absolutely.
Um we'd be happy to take the floodplain off of your hands as a park and we'll add trails there, but not interested in hearing that you need more money from us to make your project work. Well.
Anything else, anybody else having questions, I think? We appreciate to know.
Absolutely.
When the legislature goes into session, and we've been sending a letter for the last, I think, five years, asking them to put a cap on property taxes in Kansas. Twenty six states have a cap. The cap they had last year in the legislature was modeled after Florida. And it would, it would, it would just, all it would do is be a breaker, so you're not getting these huge spikes. In Kansas, we're getting huge spikes. You can't plan economically what your taxes will be the next five years, right now. If you had the cap, you would know it will not be more than four percent. So we need a lot of fire in our legislators. If you would be willing to sign a letter of support, that would be great.
I I believe we've done.
We do. We testify in the hearings, yes.
And anyway, going forward, wanna do it again.
Yes, absolutely.
But and we have done that, but if if you guys come up with a lot, we will sign.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you so much.